Evening, councilors, staff. I'm going to open the work session of the Springfield City Council with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon, absent. Counselors Pictionary.
Here.
Counselors Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
And Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
First item.
Good evening. Your first item is a development code update project quarterly check in with Mark Rust.
Good evening, council. Thank you. And I would like to share my screen if that's all right. Just a couple of quick slides that I show every time in case the for the viewing public. Like to share the project purpose and the objectives, but we are here to talk about the development code update project tonight. We are at an exciting point where we are have moved beyond the planning commission, public hearing process. They have made a formal recommendation to you for the city council to consider as part of a public hearing that will be coming up April 25th. This will be a joint public hearing with Lane County Board of Commissioners. Due to the extent of the code changes also impacting some of the lands outside the city limits inside the urban growth boundary. But just to back up for a moment, the purpose of the project here, I'm not going to read it, but I do like to share it in case people are viewing the meeting later. These are both the purpose and the objectives I'm sharing are part of the community engagement plan, which is available on the project webpage. And the objectives here listed as well. Tonight is going to be a fairly brief recap of kind of where we're at, just 15 minutes and hopefully leave some time for questions within that 15 minutes. So I'm going to move pretty quick and kind of just touch it a really high level. This is the project schedule I do share every time as well. This red line indicates we're here at the beginning of the second quarter of 2022 already. We've been at this project now for just at three and a half years. We've made a lot of progress as you've seen in the packet tonight, which we're not going to obviously go through all those materials, but I think there's roughly 500 plus pages of code. So with that, I will ask, whoops, don't want to go there yet. I will go ahead and stop sharing my screen here for a little bit. The city attorney's office would like to ask the council to go through the conflicts of interest statements. I think at this point and Mary Bridget may want to weigh in the historically or typically at these meetings, we've been doing potential conflicts of interest. I think it sounds like now that we're into the beginning of the public hearing process in front of the city council, the city attorney's office would like both potential and actual conflicts of interest. So Mary Bridget.
Yeah, I can. Thanks, Mark. I can speak to that a little bit. So the hearing process has started at the it's at the planning commission level and we'll move on to the council. Now that you're in the hearing process, instead of just declaring a potential conflict of interest, we'd like the council to consider if they have a potential conflict of interest because they're a property owner in the city, or if they have an actual conflict of interest because they know that the code will affect a development that they plan to do, a development that they know they want to do now. So that's just the one change. So just like every other meeting on the development code, if you could each go through and say whether you have a potential or an actual conflict of interest. And if Counselor Mo, if you just want to go by start with yourself or go through Ward, whatever is easier for you.
Okay, Steve Mo, I'm counselor for Ward two, and I have a potential conflict of interest, but no actual.
Leonard Stare, Ward four. I do have a potential conflict of interest as a property owner, but no actual conflict of interest.
Corey Rod, we're going all over the place, I guess. Corey Rod, Ward three. I have a potential conflict of interest as a property owner in Springfield.
And then next could be Counselor Pictionary, since you're in the room, if you'd like to go next, and then the next two counselors who are participating remotely.
Sure. Joe Pictionary, Ward six, I have potential conflict of interest with properties in Springfield, and I have no actual conflict of interest at this time.
Whichever. Mary, Joe, counsel for Ward five. I have no actual conflict of interest than a potential conflict of interest.
Danny, it's Ward one. No potential or actual conflict of interest.
Great. Thank you all.
Appreciate that. And so just to jump into a couple of high points, like I said, leave a few minutes here for some questions. But so the for the planning commission did make a formal recommendation to you tonight that is included in your packet. It's a order and recommendation. I did want to note, we don't have the votes recorded on the bottom of that order and recommendation. I did want to share that it was not unanimous. One planning commission member was absent that night, but otherwise it was five yeses and one no. Passing that order and recommendation. So the one no, I would just say that was one of the planning commissioners that did share for position papers as part of the information and packet through the deliberations process. I will plan to include those position papers from the one planning commissioner in the packet for the city council's public hearing. Just high level topics, though, for those four position papers included. You know, statements on the state rulemaking process as one. The second one was just public input in general. The third one was in regard to solar access standards, and the fourth one was the neighborhood impacts affordability and equity. So those topics were addressed in through the deliberations by staff as well. You'll see also as part of your packet tonight, a supplemental recommendation. So this is outside of the formal recommendation. The planning commission felt it was important to express some other topics and some concerns that they wanted the city council to be aware of in that have come up throughout this process. I think those four position papers that I just mentioned have to some extent been built into this supplemental recommendation as well. I would say a lot of the deliberations, even the testimony focused around the new middle housing rules, even though middle housing wasn't even conceived yet at the time we started this development code update project. It definitely took a large role once it did come through the state legislature legislative session and became law to incorporate it into the ongoing development code update. So with that, just a reminder, we are on kind of a tight deadline. We've been plugging away at this thing. And with the specific to the middle housing laws at the state level, we are required to have those enacted by July 1st. So we feel we are on schedule to do that. Hoping that the joint city council and board of county commissioners, public hearing process goes relatively smoothly, I would say. With some tentative dates for adoption potentially by the city council in mid to late May would put us in time to put the July 1st effective date without an emergency ordinance. And so with that, really, we're just looking forward to the April 25th joint public hearing. We do plan to conduct a work session with just the city council that night prior to the public hearing. The county's process is a little bit different. The night you will hold the public hearing will also be your first reading of that. The county is required to do a first reading prior to the public hearing, at least 13 days prior. So we are actually going to the Board of County Commissioners next week on the 12th to conduct a work session with them and have them consider their first reading. So the materials are in front of the Board of County Commissioners at this point as well. The the extensive code sections that are in front of you tonight will be slightly different at the public hearing. There have been some changes identified to just some kind of typos and different minor changes that will point out at the public hearing, but will be the the draft before you tonight is the planning commission recommendation draft. There will be some additional edits to that draft for your consideration at the public hearing. So with that, I'm going to leave hopefully five minutes here for any questions, or I could elaborate on any of the information I provided. So I know Sandy is going to kind of talk a little bit more about some of the other implications to middle housing from House Bill 2001 with you in the work session following this one tonight. So anyway.
Leonard.
Mark, thanks for the update. So do you believe that the draft that we've got in the in our packet is in compliance with the middle housing legislation, including 2001?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We strived very much to get it to be that way. I would just elaborate a little bit and say there are a couple of areas where, and we'd note this in the board memo or the packet memo to you tonight, that there are a couple of areas that are providing a little bit more flexibility than were the minimum required by state law for House Bill 2001 middle housing. Just one quick example is allowing the flexibility of having plexes. So duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes actually be detached units on a lot rather than having to have them be attached units. So that's just one quick example of where we're proposing a little bit more flexibility to provide more housing, hopefully.
Hey, thanks for the diagrams, by the way. That made things a lot clearer.
Great.
So I'm wondering on the 14 units per net acre maximum, and you indicate there's a 3,000 square foot minimum lot size. So that used to be 4,500 or 4,000, right?
That's correct.
And so is that something that where'd that number come from? Who dreamed that one up? Is that or is that and the legislation itself?
No, that's as a result of our own code. So actually to meet that 14 units per acre maximum density, there's no way to reach that maximum density with a 4,500 square foot lot size. So we have in our code today, the preexisting code, a zone that we call small lot residential that includes 3,000 square foot lots. That was a prior process years and years ago, maybe even a decade ago to implement our comprehensive plan as required by state law. So basically what we've done to simplify the code is just eliminate that small lot residential zone, which there is no actual land zoned small lot residential. The hurdles to actually get to that were very cumbersome. So we've just basically combined the two zones to make it more easily able to achieve that 14 units per acre density by allowing those 3,000 square foot lot sizes.
So you're saying that the 14 unit per acre is the state legislation, not what we came up with?
No, the 14 units per acre is our own comprehensive plan. That would have been based on years of land analysis when we last updated our comprehensive plan to determine what our land need was to provide 20 years of buildable land for housing in the city. Again, this predates my time with the city. I'm not sure the dates off the top of my head. But that 14 units per acre is something we would have come up with at some point as part of our comprehensive plan.
Okay, so it's hard to I keep thinking of there was it was 8.5 units per acre, but that was the max. That was the maximum or minimum. And this is the maximum, right?
Correct. I do want to just mention to so it gets complicated really quick, but that 14 units per acre is going to be allowed to be exceeded in the LDR, the low density residential zone that it is today. We're proposing to rename that to the R1 zone. Because of the new middle housing, the new state laws allowing middle housing, there will be cases where that 14 unit maximum will be exceeded. We have to allow that number to be exceeded with middle housing.
That's when they choose to go duplex as opposed to single family?
Or for instance cottage cluster is a good example. If somebody wants to do a cottage cluster, there's no maximum density for cottage cluster development.
Okay. Merrily, dammit, Darian, any questions?
I got one more. So in in order to exceed the 14 units, wouldn't you have to just stack them on top of each other? I mean, would it be possible to get them without without just putting them on the, I mean, putting them on separate stories?
Right, yeah. So one of the big drivers from the state standpoint for middle housing was trying to encourage smaller unit sizes to thereby provide more options for affordability. Whether that actually works out that way or not, it's, you know, yet to be seen, but that was the idea. So I think part of the vision was encouraging smaller units. So you could build, you know, a dozen 500 square foot units or something like that as cottages on a property and potentially have a higher density without having to go up necessarily, but going up would be another way.
Yeah, I was just visualizing a 500 square foot unit. It's a pretty small unit.
Correct. It is.
Thanks.
Several years ago, we're talking about how cumbersome are to go in and get a permit. So we decided to redo our codes. And this is, and then the state stepped in and this is a completely different different view than we anticipated at the time. And at the time, we're so we're sort of hoping to make it simpler for somebody to come to the counter. I don't think we've done that, but that was our intent.
It was encouraging to be on a phone call with a local architect this morning who is working on three multi unit developments that account amount to hundreds of apartment units that they see the code changes, at least for more of the multi unit housing is very encouraging and having it be much simpler. That I think he he kind of said, we will be realizing more at least multi unit housing development. But the the middle housing definitely is was kind of a a twist in the plot of our code update project for sure.
And the multi unit housing was a long, long range intent. I know. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anything?
Thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing you in about three weeks.
You you are so knowledgeable about this stuff. I've read this. I did read it. Nobody really reads it. I'm through it.
I've read every word of it.
And a lot of it overlays what we what we already have, but there's so many new changes.
Yeah.
Because the state mandates in legislation.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Now, our next item.
Thank you, Counselor Mo. Next item is increasing the affordability of middle housing with Sandy Belson.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the interim planning manager for the city of Springfield. So Mark gave me a bit of an introduction. As he stated, one of the impetuses for House Bill 2001 was to provide more affordability by encouraging or requiring additional density and hoping for some smaller housing. Within that legislation, there is also a requirement that the city consider ways to increase the affordability of middle housing by considering ordinances and policies that include but are not limited to waiving or deferring system development charges, adopting or amending criteria for property tax exemptions and or assessing a construction tax. So the discussion before you tonight is whether you want to further any of those efforts as part of the city's housing strategy. So we have for system development charges, we have been waiving them for accessory dwelling units, and that program has been very successful. The system development charge waiver is set to finish or to expire at the end of June. So the question before council is, do you want to continue that or change it or suspend any further waivers of system development charges? As I noted in the memo, we already have in place an option for deferring system development charges as well as financing those. And I see a question.
Merrily.
Yes. Pushed the wrong button. I had a question on what is considered success with the SDCs? What what it said, you said it's successful. How does that? What does that mean?
So for the decade prior to our effort to encourage accessory dwelling units, I think we had maybe two applications. Two, two or three accessory dwelling units built over the decade. And within the past three plus years, we've had over 60.
So that's that defines success as far as waiving the SDCs for the ADUs?
Well, I think it was a combination of the code amendments that made it easier and potentially less expensive to build them as well as the waiver. We had the waiver in place a year before the code amendments, and we didn't have any applications for ADUs when we just had the waiver in place. It wasn't until we also amended the development code to remove some of the impediments in the code that we started getting applications for the accessory dwelling units. I believe that the SDC waiver was a good marketing tool. It gets people's attention. And so it was also successful that way. You know, I cannot tell you without doing some kind of a questionnaire as to those that did build accessory dwelling units, would they have done it without the waiver? I don't know.
Since the SDC, since the SDCs help contribute to the infrastructure, have we has have we been at this long enough to be able to identify if there's any negative impact on that as part? I mean, because with the with the 80 years, we're putting more on one lot. The lot's already hooked up. So are you understanding my question? You're nodding your head.
Yes. And you know, we talked with engineering as we were preparing the SDC waiver. And as you know, these are interspersed throughout neighborhoods. They're not concentrated in an area. They're already developed lots. And so as part of the resolution that the council passed to waive the system development charges, it recognized that the impact to the funds available for capital construction, you know, there is an impact, but it was absorbable within the context of all of the SDCs that we collect on all development. But it is something to keep in mind because if we are not collecting the system development charges needed to build the capital projects, then we either are not going to be able to build them or those costs are going to be more borne by the rate payers in the case of stormwater and wastewater. And with transportation, we don't really have other options for funding.
Any I this is way out quite far out question, any speculation as to what might be the limit before we hit that point? The limit of ADUs?
I don't know.
Does it seem like we're pretty far away from that point? Or are we closer to it? It's okay if you don't have an answer.
I don't have an answer. I mean, I could check back with staff and 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 come back to you. But I mean, in in a sense, it's also a policy decision. I mean, there is a financial component, but there's also a policy decision component as to how you want to share the cost of future infrastructure.
Yeah, I was just curious as to what kind of an impact would would affect a policy decision. So, okay, that's that's okay. So you didn't have to have an answer. Thank you.
Go.
Hi, Sandy. Excuse me. So going through this memorandum that you submitted for the work session, and you have some specific questions. And it looks like you have worked your way all the way down to the property tax exemption spot on that proposal. Is that correct?
I hadn't gotten there yet. We were talking about the system development charges, but I can go on to property tax exemptions.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out how far you got because there's there's some questions that I have, and I don't want to overshoot you. So the you have a you do have a question above where you're talking about the SDC deferrals and the assessment lean process before that. You had a question as to whether or not does the council want to continue to waive SDCs? Are we at that point?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I personally would like to continue that SDC waiver program and extend it another two years. And it makes sense. It's working. And you you said, how many ADUs have been built?
I'm not sure how many have been built, but we've given permits for over 60.
You said over 60?
60, six zero.
So and then the graph that you have included in your in your document shows 50, five zero.
Well, I'd have to add that up again, but it's to see where the discrepancy is. But my understanding is we received applications for over 60.
Okay, so there's there's something needs to be fixed there.
Okay.
Because my math comes up to 58. I've done it three times. So all right. So moving on is that. So yes, I do like the ADU SDC waiver program, and we're talking 60 units compared to the many thousands of properties out there. I don't think it's got a huge impact and it's not going to break the city. And I think it's a move in the right direction in regards to housing. Even ADUs can be put and built at different price points, and that's my goal is to have housing available at all price points, not any single price point. Moving down is where you you indicated that that the the staff believes that SDC waiver program should be very focused. So and then you you move on is where it almost seems as though if we increase the amount of waivers, because it it appears as though you're trying to kind of open that up. Is that not also going to increase or decrease the amount of funds collected by the city and exasperating a problem that you indicated that it may we may be having? So it seems like it's you say one thing on one side saying, hey, we got to be careful about the infrastructure result of reduced SDCs. But then you want to add some other projects that will have those SDCs waived. So I don't know what what the and Merrily was hitting on it. And I'm just going to approach it at a different angle. Was it at what cost to the city? Does your proposal? What cost the city? Will it impact based on the proposal if what you want, because it says staff believes they they want this? How much would it cost the city?
So staff's recommendation is to stop the waivers for system development charges for accessory dwelling units. So to to no longer allow the waivers for ADUs after June, but to instead focus the SDC waivers on housing that is guaranteed to be affordable to income qualified households.
Okay, so I I happen to think that the the ADU SDC waiver program is a good program. It's been successful, and I like to see it continue. It's not hugely financially impactful to the city, but it has resulted in an increase of housing and and also increase of residents on a single lots. So our density has been helped with that. So to answer your question, yes, I want to continue to waive SDCs and take a look at what you're talking about for the housing developments.
So I'm I want to come at this even from a little bit of a different angle. When I read it, my understanding was around us no longer offering the CDCs for the ADUs. But I want to just, I'm interested in your opinion around this because what I'm getting from this around the comments around with the changes in the development code, the encouraging folks to or folks will be able to build duplexes and triplexes. Whereas prior to the development code, they the the only way to increase density was to add an ADU. So am I understanding that correctly? Okay, so what what I'm what I got from this is the reason for the switch is to to think about encouraging folks to be building duplexes and triplexes instead of ADUs or in addition to just a way to sort of switch where we're we're sort of putting the encouragement. And so I'd love to hear you just talk a little bit more around why. I mean, I have my own my own sort of biases and opinions around why I think that is, but I would love to hear you say, why do you think that that's the direction to go in in terms of encouraging us to, if we're going to build density to encourage folks to by offering incentive to build duplexes and triplexes? Does that make sense, my question?
Yeah, and stuff is not encouraged.
Yeah, and stuff is not encouraging, um, waving eighty, uh, SDCs for those other middle housing. Um, but part of the reason that. Uh, we're moving away from the ADUs is as you say, there's really not much distinction anymore with the code changes between an ADU and a duplex. If you can have a detached duplex in ADU is basically. A certain type of duplex, uh, and so the distinctions between these different housing units um, become less. And as I was explaining in my response to Council Woodrow, you know, that the SDC waiver alone was not sufficient to get. ADUs, it was the code changes that really made the difference. So I would like to see what the code changes actually do with the market, how the market responds to those code changes. Um, we're opening the door a lot wider if we start waiving SDCs for all the middle housing. That could, that's a whole lot more potential for housing units and it could really have an impact on our infrastructure and so that's in part. Um, why we're a little concerned about trying to identify what middle housing would be eligible, because it's such a broader universe. Um, and there's. Uh, a, a real need to meet the housing of the, that really the lower income, the very low income. Housing options are really lacking in our community and so that's why staff was thinking if we're going to have a program, let's focus it on those. Um, housing units that are either affordable for purchase or rent by the lower income segments.
Okay, Sandy, I'm not sure you were through with your presentation yet, but we're firing questions at you like crazy, so. We've got Merrily and I've got Joe and Leonard all have questions also, so. If you want to finish, that's okay, or we can ask questions now, is that okay?
I think it's great to.
Okay.
Dive into this topic and then when we're done with this one, I'll move to the next.
Go, Merrily.
Um, yes, I. Clarify for me, because now, now you've got me a little confused, are ADUs available for rental?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at the ADUs as a. Step one, a level one uh, opportunity for extended family. Um, uh. And, 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 and a, a, a low income affordable place. Uh, with minimum square footage for somebody to be able to use as a domicile. And I think that waiving the SDCs in order to have those opportunities on a lot are great. To me, a duplex is a much more complex, larger. Um, uh, dwelling or, uh, or. Um. Can't think of the word I want, but anyways, it's, it's larger, it's more complex, it has more uh, things in it. And, and would be probably more expensive to rent. And so, you know, if somebody were setting things up that way, um. I like the level of the ADU being, being an opportunity, I like it being separate from. And if, if it requires a distinguished, they distinguishing uh, phrase or definition in. The development code or in the policy, I would be. In favor of that as opposed to getting rid of the distinction, I think, I think the distinction is important. Um, and I, like I said, especially in regards to trying to find different levels of. Uh, income and different levels of being able to have residences. I think the ADU, ADUs are a very important element and I think, I agree with what you said as far as the. The waiving of the SDCs and that too, but it's also, the timing of it is also uh, very. Um, very real and that people all of a sudden realized that they could be. They could have them, they could have, and, and so in coordination with the SDCs, they took advantage. But I think that there was more elements to the fact, and I love seeing those high pillars on the, on the graph. And so, um. I, you know, especially with the, with the cost materials and everything going on right now. Somebody may start out with an ADU and decide to expand it later. But I think, I think having our ADUs continue and especially continuing with the waving of the SDCs. And we could do it that way, and SDC, uh, uh, allow, I'll say this and I'll quit, let somebody else talk. The ADUs can get the waived SDCs, if you're getting into a more complex. Um, property addition, you can add, you can still have the SDCs on the duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, cottage. Um, but you could still waive them on the ADUs, so I, I'll, I'll quit now.
And Council Woodrow, you're right that the ADUs are limited in size, there is a limit to eight hundred square feet for the ADU. And there is no size limit on a duplex, so you're, you're correct in that.
Thank you.
Bishopary. You before me, Leonard.
I'm, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm ready.
Okay.
That, oh, sure.
Thank you, um, so. Don't get me wrong, and when it comes to, I don't oppose. Expanding the SDCs program as opposed to what you termed as refocused or, and or eliminating the ADU program. So, I think we could do both, I don't think that the ADU program has been such a financial impact to the city that we cannot continue to do that. My uh, other thought is, is that the MWMC waiver is not really a waivers, a refund on the SDCs paid. Is not authorized for anything outside of that description of the ADU that I'm aware of, because I was part of that vote. So that is a, a, a challenge, because we can turn around and say, okay, we're going to eliminate the ADU program. Therefore, MWMC can take that off their line budget item. And we're going to introduce this item and MWMC say, nah, we're not too interested in doing that. So, that's a real possibility based on the conversations on how we got to that point with MWMC. So it, you may be basically shooting yourself in the foot in regards to. How attractive the, what you call the um. Middle housing may not be something that will have be fully supported, we don't get the supportive sub, we don't get, we get some support. Well, I'm a lane at some point, but that's all directed, well, I'm a lane and MWMC was directed towards that. Small accessory dwelling unit of eight hundred square feet. So you're, you're opening up a whole nother can and we don't know what the other entities are going to do, so it may be for not. So I do, but I do appreciate and I think that it's something we should look at and explore with the SDC deferral. That I've, I've been trying to do that for. Over decade as regards to, okay, why can't we do these deferrals so we can get these things built and then when they're sold? When that sale goes through, be prior to occupancy, that that SDC should be paid. But we ran into a lot of problems with that twenty-five years ago with the, was it the Bancroft loans?
Yep.
So at Bancroft, we, we bid it big time in a city who got dumped on with a whole ton of property. And, and guess what our economy picture looks like nowadays? It's a repeat. So, that's, that's a dangerous, uh, dangerous realm, I think the city's been, been bit really hard before. Um, the assessment lean process. That's all great, but how, how well will that work if we have the same type of economy shutdown as we did twenty-five to thirty years ago with all those properties? So, um. I appreciate looking at it, I'm not opposed to it, I don't know if it would, I think there's some real risks involved. But I am absolutely not uh, supporting eliminating the ADU program, the SDC program. I am looking forward to and I'm, and I'm supportive of it, looking at expanding that to middle housing.
Um. Thank you, Mr. President, um, I um. Agree with Counselor Pishonary that the, we should extend the SDC waiver for the ADUs. And um, I agree with Counselor Woodrow. That it should be considered as a step one option for housing here in the city. And toward that end, I would endorse the staff's suggestion that we focus very narrowly. On the SDC waiver as a way of making an incentive for lower cost housing. Um, for lower cost rents and lower cost purchase of the ADUs as well. Um, we got sort of away from the construction costs here, I mean, the construction tax, um. But Sandy, you know, are, are, are we, are we going to be talking about that later?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to clarify, Counselor Stare, you're saying you do support an SDC waiver for ADUs, but only if it is. Um, at a certain affordability threshold?
Yes, I um, I, I am for extending the waiver for lower cost ADUs, yes.
Oh, sorry. So my own, my only thing around this, probably not my only thing, but my thing right now around this is. Um, that I, I'm absolutely supportive of ADUs and all of that. Um, but they are small and it's usually one person, maybe two people can live in them. And so I think if we're really going to get serious about opening up housing affordability and, you know, working our way up to workforce housing. The idea of duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes, you could at least have families in those. And so I think if I'm understanding what y'all are asking of us, I'm in favor of expanding it. To include the duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, the, the waiver. With the focus on the affordable, you know, so it's not like a big bougie townhouse. It's more like, let's set a threshold around affordability so that we're expanding the options for building. Um, the density housing, but at an affordable level, if I'm understanding what you're asking.
Sandy, continue. Joe. So, many people. Leonard, you made a comment and I'm not sure how Sandy received it or if she heard it the same way I heard it. Cause sometimes that happens differently. You said affordable ADUs when prior to this, our program did not have a price tag on the ADUs. And it was intended to, the ADUs can be built at any price point. That would allow for whatever that ADU could be occupied based on the market of the area.
My understanding was that staff had recommended that we focus more narrowly on lower cost ADUs.
I'm getting a conflict in my mind, Sandy.
Well, I, staff is recommending that we. Focus the SDC waiver program on any type of housing, but that me. Meets a certain affordability threshold for income qualified housing.
So that, um, that sort of affirms what um, Counselor Rodley was saying. Was that potentially it could extend to duplexes and triplexes and quads.
Yeah, and potentially even apartments.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I, I'm fully in favor of that approach.
Joe. Before I could even come close to supporting what you're saying. Is that I want to see what the cost benefit is and I want to see what the cost, potential cost to the city is. Because if you're going to say right here and now, that we're going to go into SDC waiver program. And we have uh, triplexes, fourplexes, et cetera, and we have five, five, six hundred of those pop up tomorrow. Is this, can the city afford that? Because I can tell you right now, there's some very large projects that are going, a hundred, hundred unit pro, uh, project off of uh. Out by the tracks off of, of Mount Vernon, we got four hundred units out. Or Cola, so what are we doing, what kind of impact are you suggesting, because it sounds like. It could be a train wreck.
Well, right now, we're looking at fifty or sixty units, right?
I mean, we, we got six, fifty units of ADUs that are sixty to her, but fifty on the graph. And so that, those numbers are small, I, I totally get that. But if you expand the applicability to duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes, I can guarantee you that number is going to explode.
I would love to have that problem.
With, and how could the city afford it? That's, that's, I mean, if we can afford it, I don't have a problem. I have a problem if that's going to impact the city so negatively that we're going to find ourselves up against the wall. And that's what could easily happen. Get some numbers and see how that works. Corey.
I think Nancy's waving at us to say, excuse me.
And Merrily.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Mo, uh, Counselor Pishonary, I think your comments are, are well stated. Um, appreciate the work of staff on this, on this program, I think that uh, we need some additional data. To talk about what the actual impact would be to the city prior to. Um, your, you know, this is a work session tonight, there's no, uh, you know, vote or anything required of you this evening. So before we tee this topic up again before council, I'd like to have some more data around that.
Merrily.
Yes, that was, thank you Nancy, that was what was on my mind is that, as I started out saying, SDC, SDCs. Apply to our infrastructure. And if all of a sudden, we're going to have three or four dwellings on, on a lot, or we're going, whatever, then all of a sudden, we are going to affect that infrastructure. And how will we afford that if we don't have the SDCs? So I would definitely like to see more data, that was where I was going, was I would definitely like to see more data before we got any further along. In this, because it could end up costing the city money. We're talking, I don't know how many properties are out there, residential properties are out there. But even if, even if twenty-five percent of them decided to add. Uh, we, we're talking a lot of money that would, we would waive. Um, if we could afford it, great, but if we, but I, I doubt if we can, and I, I'd like to see some data.
Uh, Joe. And just on top of what Merrily just said is that we're looking at, whenever you waive an SDC. You're, you're, you're requiring the taxpayers to subsidize it. And so what you're saying is, is that when, if we look at an explosion of these types of uh. Increases in size, for example, going from an eighty thing up to a fourplex. You're going to have some significant infrastructure costs just to put it in place, and if you're waiving those SDCs, guess who gets to pay that? And I think that the taxpayers, that's not serving the taxpayer's best interest. Even though we would like to take as much money as we can from every taxpayer is what it seems, I'm not about that.
Right now, developers have a tremendous profit motive involved in building bigger units. And I think what we need to do is just have some sort of a corrective in order to incentivize building these smaller units. The uh, the, the duplexes and the triplexes and the quads and it seems to me that this would be one approach. I, I would be looking, I, I would look forward to seeing Nancy's data on this.
Okay. Sandy, you want to go on now?
So just to recap my, what my understanding of your direction is, is that. Uh, you still want to consider SDC waivers for ADUs as a potential. Um, beyond Jill, beyond June, and you also want to look at. If we focused um, SDCs on. Housing units that were affordable to low income households, what would the impact be and what would be some parameters around that? I'm going forward and we bring both of those back to you for future consideration.
Yeah, and if you can throw in there, instead of a, like a one year, let's look at a two-year extension of that, so. So it's, we got some data, some case history on that.
Very good. So I can go on to the next topic, which is the property tax exemptions. So we um, put in place in twenty eighteen as part of the. City's housing strategy, the low income rental housing property tax exemption. We have had several discussions, although not for a couple of years. On the tax exemption for housing diversity, which is the Springfield version of Eugene's. Mupti, the multi-unit property tax exemption, and so council had been giving staff direction to go forward with that. Exemption and it's still on the work program when we get time um, with a new housing analyst to, to move that forward. If you are still interested in doing so, but this is a check-in point on that tax exemption. And then there are two others that according to statute, you must, I mean, yes, that you must consider. The nonprofit corporation low income housing tax exemption. Um, it would be somewhat similar to the low income rental housing property tax exemption, but there are some differences. And then there is the single unit housing tax exemption. So in the. Interest of time, I'll stop and see if you have any questions or interest in pursuing any of those.
Joe has a question. Yeah, Sandy, when we talked about that a couple of years ago in regards to identifying areas and we landed, or at the time. The low hanging fruit was the downtown area. By way of some, I think there were some actual uh, borders used for that area. And that we asked staff to look for other areas that may be applicable and you indicated it because of the, how the. Employment issues and whatever economic issues, et cetera, that, that. Other areas have not been looked at or looked, have been identified yet. And that I am hopeful that one of the highest priorities of this new staff person. This would be a good jump off point for that person to identify, so we have some more land to look at or more and. More, or better yet, developers have more land to look at.
So we, um, you're right that the most recent focus was on downtown, because we had not included downtown originally. But we are looking at properties along Main Street. Uh, in the Q Street area, Mohawk. Um, and Marco La Meadows is where, I think we decided not to do Marco La Meadows. But we had talked about it and decided not to include it. So we have Main Street, Mohawk, Q Street, and then we added downtown. So that's what our starting point would be. If you want to continue working on that, is to bring those back to you with those mapped out, with some more detail about what the exemption would look like with some public benefit considerations and such. You're still on board. We would work on that.
I definitely am. And, and that, you mentioned Mohawk. Now, that Mohawk is the Marcola Road area.
Correct. So it includes the old Waremark Building, the banks in that area on both sides of.
And what about the Marcola Road corridor?
You mean up north of, I'm sorry, I'm getting my.
North of the freeway, north of the freeway, freeway towards Marcola Meadows, but south of Marcola Meadows, that whole strip of area where the Marcola Road goes.
Yeah, we hadn't included that, but that's something we could look at adding in.
Yeah, there's properties in there that could be developable, a bunch larger properties with single homes on them. They can put multi-unit properties or structures on those same pieces of property. And, and that would also affect what Senate Bill three, was it three forty-eight? Where they, where they decrease the minimum size to divide property tax lots to allow for homeownership, or ownership. So along that same tack would be, I think, would be pretty fruitful for that corridor.
Okay. If, if the rest of the council agrees, we can add that to what we would bring back.
Yes, please.
Leonard?
Yes.
Corey?
Yeah.
Well, see, we all agree.
But we didn't vote. It's consensus.
Okay.
Are you wanting to consider any of the other property tax exemptions?
Hey, I, I. Okay, I'm sorry.
You haven't spoke for a while, so.
Uh, yeah, hi. Um, you know, once again, I'm not super well-versed in this, but when I think about Gateway Mall and the lack of anything in there, I mean, would there be some type of exemption? I mean, if we, I mean, are we talking, if we're talking about just housing, then, I mean, not everything to say, but just, you know, when I hear exemption, I think about, when I hear about development, you know, how can we really redevelop the Gateway Mall area? And provide tax exemptions for organizations that want to house their businesses within the mall. Uh, which, I mean, I think inherently will increase jobs, but then also bring up a conversation about how do we develop, you know, that area. I know the LDS Church is going a little bit further down in Springfield, and just that whole area along Gateway, there's a lot of space that potentially should be developed, but it could be directly correlated with more jobs within the Gateway area, especially to the mall.
So tonight's tax exemptions are focused on housing. So it sounds like what you're talking about would be more in the economic development realm. And there are, I'm not as versed in that, but there are like enterprise-owned options and such. I don't know if the Gateway Mall would qualify, but that's something that our new economic development manager could look into.
Gateway Mall is privately owned, I believe, so.
Yeah, and they're, they're doing a major replat right now that's coming through our offices here. So they, they definitely have plans. I'm not real versed in what they all are, but they're basically trying to divide all, ownership of all those different stores.
Corey?
In, in answer to Sandy's question, I am interested in learning more about both the nonprofit corporation low-income housing tax exemption. And as I've mentioned before, really, whatever we can do to help move people into homeownership. So additionally, the single-unit housing tax exemption, I'd be interested in seeing what those are. And one of the things that I saw in there, particularly for that last one, was that the, it's like a ten-year tax exemption. So I'm just interested, when y'all come back, if there's any wiggle room in those in terms of how long the exemptions are.
On the construction tax, I, I see we're running out of time here, so I just wanted to get this in real quick. It's based on a percentage of the total construction cost?
It's, you can charge up to one percent of the value of the project. So that would be the construction value.
Is there any precedent for levying a construction tax based on the sale price of the units that you're constructing?
That's not contemplated in statute.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a sales tax.
That would be more of a sales.
Yeah, frowned upon. I am familiar with the construction tax in Eugene, and it has repelled many developers. And I am absolutely not interested in considering one for Springfield. I don't think it's a fair tax, and it is targeting individuals that are trying to, that we are trying to get to do some good in the city. And we're, we're doing, it appears that we'll be doing everything we can to push them away.
Okay. Sandy, continue.
Yeah, I mean, any further input, I, I heard Counselor Rodley express support for the two other tax exemptions, property tax exemptions. So I'm wondering if there's a more council support for that? And if anyone else has opinions about the construction tax, so we have direction as to whether to pursue that or not.
And Merrily.
So, you put your hand up there. I can't see it. It's so.
Yes. I'm interested in all the categories under the property tax exemptions. What Corey mentioned, I'm, I'm interested in more information on all, all those, all four of those. And the construction tax concerns me as well. I'm not overly fond of construction tax. I'd like to set that aside for the, at least for the time being, and concentrate on the others. I'm not, I, I want us to be friendly, especially in this time, right now, where, like I said, we have no idea when the construction cost and everything are going to come back down to a more normal level. And I just feel like that's one more hit, is the construction tax. And I, I'm concerned about giving a head nod to that at the moment.
Okay, we got two minutes for Joe and then Leonard.
Okay, so going back to the other programs is, is I'm not opposed strongly to any of those other programs. I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to look at, always look at ways in which we can improve our community. So I'm just very concerned about helping the community so much that it breaks us. So I really am looking forward to getting some numbers back to see. I want to see what the financial impact is for these proposals for each, each and everyone. And I'm a little concerned about the renter, the renter program. I don't think we've had, how many, how many rental property owners have taken advantage of that thus far?
None.
That's what I thought. So it's, the program has failed. And we had to look at, okay, why, why did nobody take advantage of this? What, what's wrong with this program? And where can we make it work? Because we know what we wanted to do, but we didn't get it. So how come? And that's, that's what I would like to explore.
Leonard?
I'm definitely in favor of the multi-unit property tax exemption, also known as the Mupte. I am also in favor of the, the, a, some sort. I, I mean, I, I'm not saying that the one percent flat construction tax is necessarily the way to, the way to approach this. I would like to bring these back at some point. But I, I have a feeling that the average developer here in Springfield is making more than a one percent profit margin. So I think that it's probably, probably not make or break for any of the developers here.
Corey, we're almost out of time.
Okay, and I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Stare. I also am not totally opposed to a construction tax. I'd like to learn more about what the possibilities are, which probably comes no surprise. And so I'd like to just learn more about that. For me, it's not totally off the table. It's just like, what are the possibilities? And can we use it to specifically sort of drive building affordable housing?
Okay. Nancy?
If I may, I would like to suggest that staff go back and do some more work on this issue. Perhaps bring this forward to council in a formal work session. My apologies to council this evening. I think that we really didn't queue this up as well as it could have. Because the way it reads, it is asking for a determination of council without all of the information. And in addition, this is a work session. And if we're going to be talking about a policy issue as serious as this, it should really be done in a full work session, excuse me, in a full hearing in front of the council. And we would probably, it will need to be a more deliberative process. It may take more than one appearance before council to have all of that information. And I also want to be respectful of the time that it will take to collect data such as this. But I think it's important to think about the other ramifications to city systems. SDCs are intended to be paying for the growth that comes into a community. Yet if we are not able to pay for the impacts of growth, it will have a ripple effect on other programs that we pay for it. So my concern is that when I look at the backlog, especially in our street maintenance and the percentage of streets in our city that are deemed as poor, I worry about the deferred maintenance bill on that. So I just want to make sure that we're deliberate in this process. I'm not trying to sound negative. I just want to be realistic about what the implications are and make sure council has all of the information.
I'm going to have to adjourn the meeting. We're out of time.
I like how you say it like an apology. I'm so sorry.
All right. This work session is adjourned.
Do we go right into the other?
I think we should.
Why just adjourn?
Yeah.
So, move straight ahead. All right. I'm going to open the regular meeting of the Springfield City Council with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon is absent. Counselors Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
Counselor Pictionary.
Present, thank you. I'll lead with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
Republic.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, pretty, justice for all.
They introduced, under God, in, into that back in the nineteen fifties, and it's screwed up the way that it was said for years after that. And that's another story, but I, I still remember that. Okay. As we meet, begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online, to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you're intending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order, let's see, the order of public testimony is as follows. Anybody in this council chambers, anybody who has raised their hand? Okay, Nancy, the next item.
Thank you, council. The next item is for the consent calendar approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent counter.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent counter. Roll call.
Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I.
Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a public hearing. A public hearing number one, annexation of territory to the city of Springfield located at two one eight nine LeMond Avenue. This is ordinance number one, an ordinance seeking annexation, certain territory assessors map seventeen dash zero three dash twenty-five dash twelve, tax lot four four zero zero to the city of Springfield and all Willamalane Park and Recreation District. Well, withdrawing the same territory from the Rainbow Water District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. Melissa Carino is with staff.
We're going to take. People speak to it, but there will be no decision made tonight. It's just a first reading. So. Business, you know. Are we going to open this up?
Melissa will.
Okay.
Give a presentation now.
Yes, can you hear me at this time?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Well, good evening, mayor and city councilors. Good to see you all again. Tonight, the city council is requested to consider an ordinance to annex an approximately point-two-five acre property municipally addressed as twenty-one eighty-nine LeMond Avenue in Springfield, along with.
Pros. We no longer hear you, Melissa.
Of the law. Avenue and Twenty-third Street intersection. And the applicants are new property owners of this lot and have requested an annexation in order to connect to the city's sanitary sewer for the current residential use on site. There's already a six-inch sanitary sewer connection stubbed to the property in its northwest corner. Here is an image of the current zoning and city boundaries. The site is zoned low-density residential with the urbanizable fringe overlay. As you can see, it is contiguous to city limits immediately to the west and north across the Lomond Avenue right-of-way. Here is what would happen if this annexation is approved. No other zoning changes are requested except for the removal of the urbanizable fringe overlay, and city limits would change. I do want to take a minute here to explain the full annexation area as shown here. No rights of way were included in the previous annexations of the properties to the west and north. In order to bring these sections of rights of way into city limits, we have added them to the annexation area for this request, so there are no gaps in service areas along the Lomond, LeMond Avenue right-of-way. Specifically for the Lomond Avenue right-of-way segment, it contains the city's public sanitary sewer system. And the city staff decided to include the entire LeMond Avenue right-of-way as highlighted into the proposed annexation area. Please note that the current planning practice moving forward will always to, will be to always include adjacent right-of-ways to the center line for future annexation areas in coordination with Lane County. There are four criteria for annexations from the Springfield Development Code, and that is listed in section five point seven dash one forty. I'll go through each criterion and note how this application meets those criterion. So criterion A, the affected territory proposed to be annexed is within the city's urban growth boundary, UGB, and is contiguous to the city limits on, along its western boundary and to the north separated by the LeMond Avenue public right-of-way. Criterion B. Policies specifically numbers twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five from the city's twenty-thirty comprehensive plans urbanization element are met through this application. The subject territory, again, is within the city's UGB and is currently covered by the urbanizable fringe overlay. With annexation, the subject property will be removed from special districts such as the urbanizable fringe overlay and service areas such as the Rainbow Water District, and the property would be then included in urban services. Criterion C, policies specifically numbers twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two from the city's twenty-thirty comprehensive plans urbanization element are met through this application. If annexation is approved, the subject territory can easily obtain key facilities and services from the LeMond Avenue public right-of-way just north of the subject site. Again, these facilities and services will include sanitary sewer connection, sub-water and electric service, fire protection services from Eugene Springfield Fire Department, police services from Springfield Police Department, and Willamalane Recreation District. And the last criterion, an annexation agreement has already been signed by the applicants. The agreement covers obligations for the applicants and for the city, including any financial responsibilities. The agreement includes details on future connection to key urban facilities and services, decommissioning of existing septic system on-site, and withdrawal from special service districts like the Rainbow Water District. If the annexation is approved by city council, the agreement will be ready to be executed by the city manager, and the agreement would then be recorded with Lane County. Oh no. With that, I just wanted to bring up, sorry, having a couple of technical difficulties here. Bring up that all the annexation criteria have been met. And again, this is the annexation, annexation area that is being considered for approval from the council. That is it on my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions, but also I believe the applicants are also available. For your questions as well.
Pictionarys.
Yeah, just a quick one, easy one. The on LeMond, I know that the lot is right around ten thousand square feet. And so the whole property annexation is right around seventy thousand square feet. And I know that that. Includes the street where the staff has increased it. I just want to know if. Anything that the staff did that increased that size of that lot. Is there any cost to the property owner or is that going to be absorbed by the city?
So there are no additional costs to the applicants for this enlarged annexation area. In fact, the city actually contracted and put some investments to getting the survey, the area surveyed with a legal description as well.
Perfect. Right. So I was just making sure that their interest was covered. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Leonard.
Well, that was pretty much my question. So we're annexing the street in front of the lot. Is the intent, is, is the intent just to include all of the infrastructure that's necessary to support that lot? Okay.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
I guess I can open this up for public, public hearing. Do I do that yet? And then I know the applicants. Are.
So we just do the, we just do the, it's a first rating.
As per later, that's not for this, right?
That's now.
That's public.
For this.
Yeah.
Okay. So I do open public hearing. Yeah, okay. We're gonna have a hearing on this annexation proposal and I have two cards. I believe the applicants are also here. Yeah, so. Gail Love. I'm awkward at this, you guys. Well, you're better than I am. State your, state your full name and the, and maybe the ward you live in. If you could do that.
Gail Love. My address is twenty two forty twenty third street. So I actually am adjacent to the applicant. My house is adjacent to that. Um, so mine, I'm not for or against it necessarily. I'm just, I was just curious as to how the annexation was going to. Effect that area, that area is part of the county and not actually annexed into the city and. A lot of the homeowners in that area actually like that. So we were just concerned as far as me and homeowners in that area that they weren't just going to automatically annex our. Houses into that, so.
Those are perfect comments that you made. Very good. Thank you.
That, that's it for me. That's.
Contact staff and they'll get answers of your questions.
Okay.
I'm confused here.
Thank you.
Okay, next card I have is Karen Bowden.
I'm Karen Bowden, twenty one eighty seven twenty third street. So I've been in that same neighborhood for forty five years. And my concern is annexing into the city, you know, when Steuber was alive, you know, Kitty Coroner. He got his house so he could be commissioner and all that. And you know, now then there's another one, the Habitat for Humanity and then the new owners. Again, I'm not for or against it. I just don't want to be in the city and. Taxes and, and it sounds like you just answered the question previously. So is that gonna make more people involved in it? Because all they're doing is just. All the neighbors, you know, and we just don't want to be in the city. And why did they have to go into the city to expand? I, I mean, I don't get it.
Well, I think annexation is left up to the individual property owners. Joe and Leonard.
I was going to probably out of turn or violate something, but. They, they had a septic tank issue and they cannot build on a tank that was not in a location they thought. So therefore they had to get a permit, but you can't put a new tank in in the county anymore. It's within the urban growth boundary. So they had no choice. If they wanted to expand, they, they're gonna have to get permits and have to. Go into the city as annexation. And I can tell you that our city practice is not going around annexing people's property. That's not past practice and I just, and I oppose that. I mean, that's me speaking.
So then.
Hang on a second.
I was gonna say it's a procedural issue.
Right.
Yeah, we're, I would recommend that we have, we get your contact information. We can address issues directly with staff rather than.
That's me being told to shut up, so I'm gonna.
Yeah, that's fine. And one other minor thing, let's see, lost my train of thought. Okay, so. Let's say the septic and our septic tank goes kabooey. Do we pay? Does the city come in?
It's not, this is not the right form for that.
That's not the right form. Okay, I understand. Thank you very much.
I stepped over the.
Yeah, that's okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
But you asked a question.
We do have your contact information and we will have staff contact you directly based on the information you gave us on your card. Thank you so much.
Leonard. Yeah, just for the sake of clarity, the pay lot is being annexed at the request of the owners. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We don't have any virtual, anyone virtually asking to speak to this particular item. So you are welcome to close the public hearing at your discretion.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I said hit the gavel. I've never done that before.
Do it.
Okay, there we are.
There you go.
Thanks. I have good guidance here. Next item is business from the audience. Are there any cards raised for business from the audience?
Do we have any additional questions for our staff, Melissa Carino, on the public hearing before we?
I don't know. Let, let me do the best I can here. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Any additional questions regarding that topic or staff?
I don't have any additional questions, but I did want to see if the applicants wanted to share anything. If not, that's fine. Just wanted to.
Yeah, I knew they were in here, but I don't have a card for them. So I didn't know when was the proper time to invite them up here.
I would suggest that since the public hearing is closed, that we move on.
Okay.
Okay.
If they, if the applicants would like to speak during the business from the audience portion of the agenda, they can certainly submit a card to the clerk.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. No other questions.
Where I'm at, where am I at now? Business from the audience. I apologize. Now, I apologize to applicants for getting things screwed up.
So you have these two cards for business from the audience and we do have.
This.
Wanna find Sean.
Business. Business from the audience. I have two cards here and I believe there's a couple of virtual people. And June Fathergale is my first card. You have three minutes. Give your name and.
Good afternoon. June Fathergill, three one seven thirtieth street Brentwood Estates, one of the last multi-family units. Built in the, in the area ten years or more ago. Yes, I'm speaking be, I came today because I had, was under the impression that on the agenda would be the. Decision about whether to give the money for Anne's Heart Women's Shelter or for Ebert. United Methodist Church to develop as a warming center. Obviously, those are not on the agenda. So I'm curious about when they will be on the agenda because I would love to be here when that decision is made. Because I just want to know what you decide. I want to make a plug though for Anne's Heart Women's Shelter. And the money to have to buy, to purchase a house. I sent you all a memo about that. Why we think that's important. It would be a wonderful investment of the city in helping our most vulnerable people in our city right now. It would be an investment in a new project that it's really hard to get off the ground without some initial capital investment. And if we had that investment from you to have a house, then we would be able to raise funds for the operation and the other things that we need to do. You have to have the shelter before you can open a transitional shelter. So I really encourage you to take this opportunity. You have an opportunity to do something wonderful and we will work our darndest to make sure it happens so that you can be proud of what you did. So please consider that very seriously and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is. Karen. That's June's. This is the next one. Okay, Carol, Carol Hart. If I mispronounce your last name, I apologize.
H E A R T. Hi, can you hear me? Can you see me? Okay, all right. I'm Carol Hart, two one four seven Centennial Boulevard and I am here. Because I have a concern that I'd like to share and I thank all of you for being here. I have two goals in speaking to you. First is to express my surprise and disappointment at the sudden permanent appointment of Chief Shearer. Without any national search or community input. Secondly, I'm here to offer suggestions for positive corrective action. On June sixth, twenty twenty one, Nancy Newton stated, and I quote. The position of city manager, city attorney and the police chief is probably the most visible and consequential hire a city manager can make. End quote. Also stated in the same transcript quote. I would seek out input from various groups in the community that aren't always represented here. People that aren't always the most vocal and of course I would include the BIPOC community. I would want to involve the Springfield Police Alumni Association. You know, the one, you know, there are a lot of voices I want to hear from. End quote. None of that happened. Suddenly, we have a permanent police chief appointed by Nancy Newton. Without a national search or community input. Nothing, nothing that was stated on June sixth, twenty one, twenty twenty one concerning hiring a new police chief has happened. I feel sad about this. Because we all know from the millions of dollars that have been spent in the last very few years. Paid in lawsuits and for the extremely high insurance deductible we now pay because of those lawsuits. As well as the fact that even as I stand here, there are more lawsuits that have yet to be settled. I'm getting emotional. That's my Italian heritage. Just a minute. Man, I'm sorry. There are more lawsuits that have been filed and yet to be settled. We, we in this community have a very serious and troubling problem. Confidence in our city leadership and SPD needs to be restored and trust regained. And I really believe that's totally possible.
I, I apologize. Your time is up.
My time is up. Okay, well then I didn't get to say my suggestions, but thank you very much and it is a concern. So thank you.
On, on with council response, I just wanted to make sure that folks know that, that. Oh, I thought there was more. No more.
We have additional attendees that would like to testify or provide public comment.
I'm on the first plane here.
As of right now, we have nine virtual attendees that are ready to provide public comment.
Let's see. Do I have a card here that I haven't? No. Okay, I've got everything. Okay, virtual.
So we are moving on to our virtual attendees. Our first attendee is going to be Jennifer Potter. And Jennifer, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. My name is Jennifer and I am a resident of Ward three. And I have two things. First of all, I'd like to request that council do a work session specifically on helping. Homeless and very low income Springfield residents who are struggling with housing. It's a difficult issue and I think that a dedicated work session would be really helpful to figuring out some solutions for that. And on a different topic, well, I really do appreciate the changes that Chief Shearer has. Been making much needed changes in our Springfield Police Department. I am concerned with this lack of transparency and the lack of public input and Chief Shearer being named to be our permanent police chief. You know, it's especially disappointing given that it was stated less than a year ago that the search would involve the council and the community and then it didn't. And it's really not fair to Chief Shearer. So you know, even though he may be the most well qualified candidate. By not having an open search, the community now has no way of knowing if he is the most qualified candidate. If there'd been a more open search, the community would feel a lot more trust and confidence in Chief Shearer moving forward. So it really wasn't giving him the best start to his tenure. So in the future, I would like to ask the council to just ensure that we have a much more open and transparent system for making major hires. Especially a really important hire like police chief. Thank you. I'll yield, yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next.
Our next speaker is Holly S. And Holly, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Great. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Bear with us, Holly. Can you please try?
All right. There you go. I got muted. Sorry.
Our fault. We apologize.
No worries. So my name is Holly Schaper. I live in Ward two. As another commenter noted, or a couple of commenters now, on June's fix of twenty twenty one. After concerns, folks expressed dismay at the sudden appointment of an interim chief of police. City manager Nancy Newton spoke at length and made a promise to the residents of Springfield that she would engage in a quote, very extensive recruitment process. That she would be putting a lot of thought into. She promised to include members of the community in this process. Thus mirroring the recruitment and hiring process she herself went through. On that June evening, less than a year ago, the weight of this particular appointment seemed to be understood and respected by her. It is astonishing and extremely disappointing that a mere nine months later, with no fewer than four active lawsuits against SPD. She chose to break that promise and betray the community by permanently appointing a new police chief with absolutely no input from the public. There are a few reasons that this is so disappointing. First, the city claims that DEI work is a priority. How can that be the case when an executive position has been filled with no search? Chief Shearer has never had to apply for this job. There was no search when he initially was appointed as interim. To be clear, the fault does not lie with him. In fact, this was a disservice to Chief Shearer. Since he may have emerged as the most qualified candidate during a national search. However, we will never know if that would have been the case. Just as we will never know if there would have been a more qualified candidate. There does not seem to be a lack of qualified executive level applicants. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have seen Lane Community College have so many qualified candidates during the search for a new president at the same time as this. I'm also dismayed since this appointment occurred a mere three months after an article in the Register Guard reported. That lawsuits against SPD have resulted in nine point one six million dollars in lawsuit settlements in five years. Accounting for ninety percent of all settlements paid by local agencies with EPD and the sheriff combined paying eight hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars in that same time. I really hope the city seeks community input for hiring or promoting SPD officers and for. and for Chief Shearer's performance appraisals. Additionally, I hope the council forms an oversight commission for SPD and seeks community input during that process. And finally, if you are in fact prioritizing DEI principles, I hope that city hiring policy is amended to mandate national searches for leadership and executive-level positions, so this never happens again. I'm truly saddened by this. I thought the city was finally taking steps towards rebuilding trust. I was wrong. I feel betrayed and like a fool for believing that a promise made by the city would be kept. Another instance of "just trust us" leading to disappointment.
Thank you, Holly.
Our next speaker is Shay. I'm, yes, Shay Gallagher Starr. And Shay, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Okay, there we go. Hi, I'm Shay Gallagher Starr. I'm in Ward 6. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm also here this evening to talk about the sudden permanent appointment of Chief Shearer. And I have some questions that I would appreciate it if the city council would direct to the city manager Nancy Newton to put this on the public record. I'd like to know more about what happened here because as other commenters have already pointed out, we were given very specific promises, including that she would need the expertise of a professional recruitment firm hired in a competitive process, that there would be a widespread search, that members of the community and specifically the BIPOC community would have their inputs solicited. And I don't see that any of that has happened. And I'd really like to find out why and where those decisions were made. So I'd like the city council to ask, is Springfield an equal-opportunity employer that prioritized diversity, equity, and inclusion practices? And how has that been shown or not shown in the permanent appointment of Chief Shearer? By not conducting a widespread search, have we opened Springfield up for more lawsuits on the basis of an EEO or EEO claim? And how have the opinions and input been solicited from marginalized and often overpleased parts of our community, specifically BIPOC, Latinx, LGBTQ, unhoused communities? I understand that a survey was sent out. I participated in that survey. I have grave doubts that an opt-in survey sent to maybe as much as a third of our community is actually adequate to the purpose. So, moving forward, I would very much like to see that these level positions be made from hiring panels that have been formed to include community members. I want to see mandated national searches for our leadership positions. And once again, and I've spoken to this before, it is critical that the city council work to form an oversight commission with oversight of SPD. And that needs to include representatives from marginalized and overpleased groups. Thank you.
Oh, good timing. Perfect. So, time is up.
Our next speaker is Johannes Tadeo. And Johannes, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, city councillors. My name is Johannes Tadeo. I am a community organizer for Springfield Alliance for Equity and Respect. First off, I just want to congratulate the amazing, incredible folks at the Springfield Public Library for all their work in creating an acceptable space that feels welcoming. Emily David, Kristen Keer, Mindy Linder, Maddie McGraw, and many others. They are well-deserved in receiving the Safer Human Rights Leadership Award, as well as an incredible grassroots community member who has fought hard in uniting a community and making sure that there are resources and support when in need. It's an honor to have granted Rosalvo Rodriguez the Human Rights Community Leadership Award. And another note, I am very concerned to see that there was not an equitable process when hiring the police chief for our city. During a previous city council meeting that happened on June 6, 2021, quoting the city manager, I think that short, I think that short of saying my position and maybe the city attorney, the chief of police is probably the most visible and consequential hire that a city manager can take, and so I take that very seriously. And another quote, you know, "We have a pretty small HR department. This type of recruitment, I would definitely need the skills and assistance from a professional recruitment firm. I would want to have a process that involves all members of our community. I would seek out input from various groups in the community that maybe aren't always represented here." Although that sounded promising, that did not happen. Something that the community wanted to see was the city hiring folks based solely on their qualifications in a competitive search where community members from various groups could be part of the process in hiring. Instead, the process happened without these components. We missed out on the opportunity to see what the poll candidates would have looked like and an opportunity for BIPOC and other groups to feel heard on what community members expect from police chief and possible changes that could have been made to build trust with the department. For a moment, it felt like diversity, equity, and inclusion was going to be a priority when hiring moving forward. I hope to see the leadership from the city correct and follow up with the community members who came to speak their concerns today. I asked the city to amend the hiring policy to mandate national searches for the leadership team and executive-level positions to prevent this from occurring again in the future. I also hope to see that the community can be part of the evaluation process of Chief Shearer when reviews occur on performance and ability to engage with the community. I understand that councillors cannot respond on this issue today, but I hope you all will follow up with Nancy. And Steve Mo, you're doing great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Johannes. I'm not running a meeting too well, but thank you.
Our next speaker is A.C. A.C., you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I live in Ward 1. Thank you all for being here tonight. My comment is for everyone, but also in particular for Nancy Newton. I am a black resident of Springfield, and I would like to address the lack of national search for the next police chief. Nancy, you promised me and my people that you would include our voices in a national search, and you betrayed us. That's all. I yield the rest of my time.
Our next speaker is Lizzie Utterback. And Lizzie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This is Lizzie Utterback in Ward 3. Tonight, I'd like to start by addressing the city manager Nancy Newton first. Ms. Newton, since you began your work as Springfield city manager, I've seen you navigate difficult situations in a professional and skillful manner. I've seen you develop meaningful relationships with various leaders in the community and joyfully participate in community events. And unfortunately, now I can say that I've seen you make a very clear promise and not keep your word. I understand it was within your authority to appoint Chief Shearer as permanent chief of police, and based on what I've seen you do in your short tenure here, I genuinely believe that you thought this to be in the public's best interest. However, the way you went about this hiring was deceitful, disrespectful, and brings another cloud of suspicion over our city. Just a few months ago, you promised the permanent police of chief position would only be filled after a national search and public hiring process was conducted, and of course, none of this happened. In recent months, we've heard from business owners on Main Street who also claim the city told them one thing and appears to be doing another. While these are separate issues, it is apparent that misleading the public is common practice within the city, and this is unacceptable. With so many recently settled lawsuits and the current pending ones against the city, Springfield clearly has a culture of mistrust and misdeeds perpetuated by some city staff and leadership. Council, I hope you agree that policies and other structures that provide oversight are sorely needed. These provide a mechanism to ensure proper steps are followed and will go a long way in repairing community trust. Tonight, I'm asking that you seek a path to immediately establish a policy requiring a formal search process for all executive-level city positions. And I'd like to remind you that I support the Police Advisory Committee's recommendation that the city establish a police oversight border equivalent committee, another example of a structure that ensures accountability regardless of whoever happens to be in charge. We can no longer operate on the basis of superficial trust. Thank you. I'll yield my time.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Mo, I would like to bring it to your attention that we have reached our 20 minutes. So I will need the permission of the council to proceed with business from the audience. We do still have four speakers or four hands raised at this time.
I would like to move that all of the people that are in the queue be allowed to speak.
I don't oppose it.
Early?
Yes, that's fine.
Amy, are you okay with that?
Yeah, let's do it.
I have to. Okay, go ahead.
Perfect. Our next speaker is Grace B. And Grace, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, thanks. So my name is Grace and I live in East Springfield. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address the council and for extending the time this evening. The recent decision to appoint Chief Shearer in a permanent position raised some concerns for me as a Springfield resident and left me feeling bewildered at best, and it's been really illuminating for me tonight to hear how much I'm not alone. I would like to learn about plans for future decision-making. I realize the decision has been made now, and my testimony tonight is not meant to imply any concern with Chief Shearer as ultimate choice for SPD chief. Rather, I recognize that there is ongoing work being done and that urgently needs to be done to build trust, not just rebuild trust between SPD and all members of our community. I'm wondering why there was not a more inclusive search and transparent process for making this decision. As has been noted by other, city manager Newton is on record as saying that a national search would be conducted, yet such a search never occurred. Transparency about what criteria were used to evaluate Chief Shearer's qualification and fit as opposed to alternative candidates would have increased confidence in this decision. I'd also be interested to know who else was consulted, if anyone, during this process, and who would be consulted for similar decisions in the future. Accountability is so important for our public trust. Given that most officers view themselves as community servants, it seems that community input should have at least been considered, if not carefully weighed. What steps are being taken to ensure that future decisions regarding high-profile decisions are transparent in order to increase community confidence that democratic, fair, and high-quality processes are being undertaken to ensure that the best candidate was selected? Also, I heard a few other statements refer to the community service survey regarding SPD that went out a few months ago now. I completed the survey, and I'm a doctoral-level research scientist, and I was quite frankly mortified by the quality of the survey. I'd like to hear more about how this survey was designed, how it's being analyzed, and how it will be used to inform future decisions. And finally, I'd like to second Jennifer's helpful suggestion to have a working session focused on the challenges faced by our unhoused community members. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is James Hugo. And James, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I appreciate you, everybody. I'm actually really enjoying Steve running the show. It's been very nice having some change there. I've got a couple of topics I want to talk about, but I'm gonna, I guess, talk about what's been spoken about the last few minutes here. I agree with all the speakers. I appreciate all of you coming out or getting on the phone here like I'm doing and talking tonight. It gives me hope that there's people in this town that think like me, that want equality, that want change, that want to have a fair place to live. I was told by Nancy last year that, because I personally, as a man who's working on my ego every day and my entitlement, especially being a Caucasian male, I was, I'm open to the idea of having a woman be the chief of police. And I brought that idea up last year because there's been so many problems within the department as women being treated really bad as officers, and there's been lawsuits and whatever. I don't mean to talk about that anymore. But basically, I feel that a strong woman being the chief of police would be a great, great decision. And I'm kind of shocked reading the paper the other day or last week that they chose who they did. But anyway, I want to talk about the main reason why I want to speak, and that's the environment. We've got a problem. Climate change is real, and I haven't still kind of haven't seen the city of Springfield acknowledge that. I think a committee should be created to talk about the environmental issues we have with the businesses, the factories, the mills. I'm tired of hearing excuses from council members, La Rappa, La Rappa, La Rappa. You know, I'm tired of hearing that. So my suggestion is we get community members like myself to get together with the lawmakers and elected officials here locally and talk about the environment. Talk about climate change. Talk about how maybe we should look up and pay attention to what we've got going on around us. We're gonna have wildfires coming up again. You know, the city needs to have a good place, a planning place for emergencies like that. I don't think they do. Anyway, I appreciate everybody listening. Oh, I got 50 seconds. I'll talk about the housing issues that I was listening to in the city work session. And my suggestion for all of you folks, elected officials, there's really no low-income people being represented at the level, you know, you elected officials. Maybe in the discussion in the work session, have some low-income people like myself that care about the community, and like, let's talk about it. Let's get some input from people because it feels like there's an elite ruling class in Springfield deciding where the low-income families are going to live, where the development's going to be. That's what it feels like. It feels like there's corruption in this town, and there's 1% with like religious fanatic ideas, maybe some racism there that want to control all of us folks that just want to work and pay a fair share. Anyway, thanks for listening. Have a great night. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hugo. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Anthony Reed. Anthony, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Reed. I'm from Ward 6. On June 6, 2021, regarding selecting the next police chief, Nancy Newton said she wanted a very extensive recruiting process. She wanted input from the underrepresented folks in our community. She wanted to include the BIPOC community. She said she needed the skills and assistance of a professional recruiting firm. At some point between June of 2021 and March of 2022, Nancy decided she no longer wanted to include those community members she did back in June. She no longer needed the skills and assistance of a professional recruiting firm. As for the reasoning behind this dramatic change of heart, I believe the residents of Springfield deserve an explanation on that process. The apparent stance of those responsible for this complete breach of trust could best be summed up in the words of Joe Pishanary on March 15 in response to a post announcing Chief Shearer being appointed. Joe said, and I quote, "Very happy to see this. I'm sure some feathers will be ruffled, but to keep him, it's worth it. Time to just move forward and get over it." Again, I ask you, Joe, get over what? I'm left to assume you mean get over being lied to. Get over being left out of the decision-making processes in Springfield and get over the fact that all of the pretty words said by Nancy about being inclusive were just words, and you all will do whatever you want to do in the end. And the residents of Springfield can, as Joe so elegantly stated, get over it. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I believe we have one more.
Our last speaker is S.J. Lor. S.J., you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
We can. Thank you. Thank you. I would just really like to echo what everyone has been saying in regards to the hiring of Chief Shearer. It did kind of come as a little bit of a shock because I was also under the impression that we were going to be going through a process to hire, and everyone was going to come together to decide. And it's just kind of disappointing considering, you know, our last police chief was also an interim and then became the full-fledged police chief, and look where that got us. So I'm very disappointed in that. And then I would love to echo what James was saying about climate change. I also, and our family is also advocates for climate change. It is something that should be acknowledged and should be planned on coming up with solutions to help combat it. I actually, over the course of the pandemic and homeschooling children and coming up with new ways to be creative and learn as a family, I actually had reached out to our local library. as well as the La Rappa organization to try to get more information and see if possibly the library had resources for the citizen scientist programs. They've been becoming extremely popular with youth to get involved in the community. And I would really love it if the city council would maybe look at additional funding for our library. Having a citizen scientist program would be fabulous for the young kids and families in our community who are looking to kind of learn more about climate change and getting kind of some hands-on science. And having those opportunities would be really great. Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you. That's the end of our public. And now we have council response.
Excuse me, councillor Mo.
Yes.
Before the council responds, I just want to just do a procedural note.
All right. I didn't know you had something, but go ahead.
Just to remind the council that appointment of employees is a city manager role, as some of people have said tonight in their testimony. So just caution you about responding about that issue, the appointment of Chief Share in a meeting. That's all.
Thank you. And councillor.
Were you gonna jump in first? I, thank you. I want to thank everyone for taking time to zoom in and share their concerns and thoughts. And particularly, just in response to June Father Gill, who kicked us off. My understanding, and I wanted to double check, is that we do have a work session planned to talk about sort of housing and homelessness coming up on April 18. So, and I don't know all the details of that, but I have, I know we've been talking about these in different ways. And so I think that's around sort of projects in particular. And then later in May, and I don't know the date, we are also going to be talking again or sort of revisiting sort of housing projects in not necessarily around the unhoused, but I think that we're also going to be talking about sort of housing strategy. So it's, I'm not lying, right? May 9th, okay. I'm looking around. Am I lying? Am I making it up? I'm not promising anything. I'm just, I think that I've saw it on our development. And that could be subject to change because I know we try to cram a lot into meetings, but just that's my responses that we do. For those of you who have been encouraging us to come back and talk about this, we do have that on the docket. Thank you, everyone.
Councillor Damian, and then Leonard.
Hey, y'all. Everybody, first of all, thank you for your comments. Just want to make two points to the black woman that spoke. Thank you. You don't hear many black voices and oftentimes the black voices grouped in with this whole concept of BIPOC, which I find super problematic. And oftentimes, other racialized minorities end up being the voice that represents us, and that's never okay. So thank you. Would love to talk to you offline about some things as far as Blackness within Springfield. To, for the person who mentioned low income and being on these boards, I mean, I don't consider myself low income, but I definitely empathize and agree to a certain extent where we have a certain type of person who wants to be on these boards and there's a lot of rotation. I think in some ways, we need to reconfigure power structures as well as attractiveness to these boards and commissions. And it's not necessarily based on socioeconomic, but then also, you know, yeah, I mean, I'm all for a revaluation of how boards and commissions recruit, retain, operate, and all this stuff so we can get more voices, you know? As a black transplant, I mean, sometimes I don't feel that my voice is as prominent just within the state. Now, this year on city council, I think I feel very welcome amongst the councillors. But no, but I do agree 100%. I would love to figure out ways to get more voices involved from various intersections so we can represent everybody. Thank you.
Leonard. Thank you. I'd just like to thank everybody for their comments. June Father Gill, but happy birthday, June. Carol Hart, Jennifer Potter, Holly Shaper, Shay Gallagher Star, Johannes Tadeo, IAC, Lizzie Utterback, Grace B., James Hugo, Anthony Reed, S.J. Lor. We've certainly listened intently to all of your comments and I, just speaking for myself as a, as a person of privilege and a, and a white male in this town, I think that all of the people in this city council are looking for ways to be better all the time.
Any other councillors wish make comments? Let's see. I don't see any. And we'll move on. Next item.
Next item on the agenda is business from the city manager. No further business from me this evening.
Business from the city attorney?
As far as business from the city attorney, we have item one, termination of the state of emergency during, excuse me, due to COVID-19 pandemic. Resolution number two, a resolution terminating the declaration of a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Mary Bridget Smith on the item.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to ask the council to adopt a resolution terminating the city council's declaration of emergency due to the COVID pandemic. The state has terminated their emergency order, and at this time, we are asking the council to follow suit that it would be appropriate to do that. This termination does allow for a 90-day grace period for some of the emergency regulations that were enacted as part of the emergency declaration. That's to allow for existing temporary and emergency approvals that were done. I do want to take a couple minutes just to highlight some of the emergency regulations and approvals so the council would have that information in case it comes up with constituents. Many of these items, the city is no longer having to do or regulate. So for example, Peace Health had a vaccine clinic that since closed down. The Palat Shelter project will be brought before the council on a separate matter. There is one remaining item, which is the expanded intensified cafe seating that I am looking for council approval or feedback on. If you'd like to see additional information about that, as you know, many restaurants, I wouldn't say many, but some restaurants had expanded their outdoor seating during the pandemic. Some of this was on their own property, and that goes through a separate development process. For example, if you're gonna have like an expanded patio or something, and I think there's a couple restaurants in Mohawk that did that. But there were some other restaurants, a few downtown and in other areas that had expanded or intensified cafe seating in the right-of-way. And that's where it intersects with the city's ability to regulate its right-of-way. And asking the council if you'd like to see some additional regulations about allowing those restaurants to keep those structures that they have in the right of way or evaluate that. So two items tonight, asking for guidance on cafe seating and then to terminate the emergency declaration.
I just thought I'd jump in on the asking for guidance first before we get to voting. I, my thoughts around this is, I would love to look at how to continue and expand that and one of my questions around it are how it impacts sort of ADA and accessibility in terms of people being able to move. I know that up and down the street. So I would want to just see some sort of feedback on that of how that's been for folks. And I'd love the idea of extending it in places where it would work as long as it's not impacting folks' ability to get up and down the street and to have access to buildings and all the things.
Marley, next.
Yes, basically almost the same thing. I would like to, I would like to have more conversation about it to know how we could, how we could help with that's been set up and how, what might be not a good idea, but I'd like to definitely have a conversation to see how much we could incorporate that wouldn't inhibit other things. Because I think it's a, I don't know, I think it kind of adds a atmosphere in downtown that I think we'd like to, I'd like to see perpetuated if, if we could do it without causing any, any problems or any trouble. Okay, fair enough. All right, that's helpful. I will pass that along to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Joel and Damian, I guess.
Thank you. No, I think that's great. We send the emergency declaration except for the cafe feeding on the different rights of way. And I assume, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have already addressed those, making sure that we have some ADA accessibility before we even put that in place. And also, I agree with councillor Rodley and Woodrow in perhaps even exploring other ways which we can expand that program. I think it's really great for the city. I'm concerned about safety issues, of course, because you're talking about cars and trucks and things. But I think it's a great program. And frankly, it's fun to drive downtown and see people hanging out and enjoying the sun and having a beer and a hamburger or whatever. So I'm a very big proponent of that program and would not, would not want to see it go away. So, but everything else you can dump.
Next to Damian and Marley, you still have a hand up. I don't know if it's still from before or not.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. Let's get rid of it. And as far as like the cafe seating, I mean, I think more seats have allowed organizations or businesses to facilitate more people coming in, which means that they can recoup some of the finances that they lost during the main push of COVID. And so I'm all for it. But at the same time, I mean, I, you know, I go down Main Street and I see, you know, cafe-style seating probably leads to more pedestrians. And I just think that sometimes there's a lack of respect for people who drive down that too fast and all that stuff. And then also the parking kind of gets in the way, which causes some other problems. And I just think we need to reexamine that piece to make it more safe and accessible for all.
Thank you, Damian.
Okay, well, that's helpful guidance. I think what I'm hearing is the council wants to look at this program to have it regulated on a more permanent basis, but keep in mind particularly ADA access and safety for all involved, those in cars and also the people who are using the seating. Right. Okay, got it.
Should I entertain a motion for resolution number two?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councillor Pitts.
Hey.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Share.
I.
Councillor Woodrow.
Yes.
And councillor Pishanary.
I.
Great. Thank you. No other business from the city attorney. Thank you very much.
Which are.
Meeting is adjourned. I said I'm done. That's for a minute.